Welcome everyone to the Wednesday, March 15th meeting of the Chappaqua Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive sessions since 6:30 discussing the employment history of particular persons, potential litigation and to receive advice from council subject to board approval. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting? Okay, Kaylee, can I have a second? All in favor? And we'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you for joining us tonight. We definitely needed that snow day yesterday. I was not a believer, but it was the biggest snowstorm of the season. So um, I hope everyone had a restful and safe and warm day yesterday. I'm happy to be back this week. I want to thank Warren for taking over my seat last week while I was out of town. Warren is out of town himself this week, but all five of us should be back together next week for round three of our March budget presentation. So on Monday night before the snow rolled in, the Newcastle League of Women Voters and the PTA jointly sponsored an information session at Town Hall for anyone potentially interested in running for the school board or the library board. So I really wanted to thank Leslie Kuhn and Lee Barth and Tara Ramirez for their work on this event. I was there along with Jennifer Fahy, who is the current president of the Chappaqua Library Board. And we had some residents join us to get information about running this year. I know that we have mentioned this previously. This year's election is on May 17th. There are open seats on both the school board. I'm sorry, what did I just say? May, okay, typo in my report, May 16th. Thank you, Lisa. And there are open seats on both the Board of Education and the Library Board. As far as the school board goes, it is a three-year term. There are two seats up this year, mine and Warren's. And as we have both previously announced, we are not seeking reelection. So we are hoping that a number of service-oriented community members will pick up a nominating petition from our clerk, Lisa Elsner, over at the Ed Center. The petition requires, is it 37 signatures this year? Thirty-seven signatures this year. You should just get a couple for good measure, but that's, it's not a big requirement. It's due to be returned no later than April 17th, correct? Okay, I think that's where I got my 17s mixed up. I want to say again that I or any member of the board would be happy to give anyone the down low on being a school board member. All of us are reachable by phone, email. We'd be happy to sit down with anyone and we encourage anyone who is potentially interested to please, please contact us. Last thing for tonight, I just wanted to mention that tomorrow at 3:30, we are having another meeting of our Strategic Plan Steering Committee. We do a strategic plan every five years in order to make sure that in an ever-changing world and educational environment, that all of our students, whether they graduate in 2023 or 2033, I'm scared to even say that number, have the skills and knowledge that they need to be successful in whatever endeavor awaits them after they leave Greeley. We've had really great discussions, all of us, about everything from ChatGPT to curricular alignment and social emotional well-being of our students. And we are now getting to the point of narrowing down the critical areas and initiatives that this district will be focusing on for the next five years so that our students here in Chappaqua continue to receive the best public education possible. So we will continue that work tomorrow. That is it for me tonight. There is a superintendent's conference day this Friday. So while our staff will continue to engage in professional development, our students will have the day off. So I just want to wish all of our families a good three-day weekend and we can move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jane. Okay, so we have a very brief community update since we've been meeting every week this month. The first thing that I wanted to mention that is on the agenda for our third reading and board consideration for adoption is the update to our graduation policy. So we've discussed the opportunity we have to redefine who would be speaking at graduation based on the number of valedictorians that have been presented. In particular, this year we have 18 student speakers in the valedictorian lane, which is great in a lot of respects, but it also has come to us through feedback that is really something that needs, we need to adjust moving forward. So the policy committee has been meeting and we've had board discussions. And we've also discussed with the high school administrative teams, a way to redefine our speakers at graduation so that we aren't in a situation where we have to make restrictions on the valedictorian speaker based on the number of students who are being honored. So we have a recommendation tonight before the board that defines the speakers at graduation as the president of the board, the superintendent, the principal, student council president, senior class president. And then the Horace Greeley staff chaired by the principal will select an additional student speaker and/or student presenter yearly. So we have the same number of students speaking as we do adults. So this will be up for the board's consideration for adoption. We received no feedback on this from anyone in the community and this is our third reading tonight. Also, we, the, do you want to move this slide? I'm not able to move it. We also would like to give an update on our diversity, equity, inclusion work from the four central office administrators. We're having some technical issues tonight. It's the first time in this space in a while. So. So out of the office, my office in February and January, in terms of our DEI focus, we finalized the district calendar to be more representative of our community's need based on their personal observances. We had our targeted PD for principals with insight to address cultural competence. We facilitated sessions for early release day. All of us were a part of that initiative. We had our CARES committee meeting to examine district needs. I provided oversight for our K-12 hate speech lessons and I chaired and will continue to chair the district equity team for this month. The priorities out of my office are reframing and budgeting for our DEI positions based on our needs, sharing our DEI structure with the community for feedback, finalizing the DEI structure of 23, 24 so we can budget appropriately. It is also facilitating targeted PD for our secondary principals with insight on hate speech, finalize and administer our staff belonging survey, which will be going out on Friday, and then continuing to work with the district equity team. So now I'm going to move over to Adam. We're on the wrong slide. So if we could go back.
Good evening. And curriculum and instruction, you can see the work that's happening in January and February. We had quite a few days and months that we could recognize and use it as educational opportunities. Holocaust Remembrance Day, we had extended advisories at the middle school, Martin Luther King Day, Black History Month, Women's History Month. We provided resources to teachers and used those as opportunities to teach those things in our classrooms. We coordinated hate speech lessons, which were delivered at all levels. We did some work with Equity PD planning for the early release day, which was February 3rd. We did some revisions of curriculum in grades five, six, and seven. We launched a new DEI website. And then in terms of March, we've got some priorities. We've got some of our PD team attending, teaching for equity and justice from Facing History. We're also exploring artificial intelligence as a way to help us flag culturally insensitive lessons. We've had some interesting experiences with how AI can assist in identifying insensitive lesson material. We have a conference day coming up on Friday, and so we've got a diversity, equity, and inclusion strand and quite a few offerings there, including Insight offering a 90-minute session for us. So those are some of the things. We're also launching the, in combination with human resources, launching that diversity, equity, and inclusion professional developer search process for both an elementary and secondary level.
And now we'll move on to Andrew. If you could talk about the work coming out of Human Resources and Leadership.
Sure. In January and February, we had last update talked about planning for our district recruitment or retention committee. That's all underway and established. Next meeting is on Friday of this week. We completed our, completed the focus groups for our DEI position with students and faculty and administrators and community members and then reported back to the CARES committee. And that was the subject of presentation last week here. Also then attended training through the Cornell ILR School and through BOSI's for recruitment and retention. And we also attended Laura Hudson Diversity Hiring Fair as a district and continue to support the BSU on day five. Going forward through March, working on as we move into hiring, seizing training, all of our hiring committees as we move into that, that piece of our search process for candidates and continue to build relationships with New York Schools of Education as part of our outreach efforts. Then we're also looking to undertake the search and fully anticipate the DEI status issues that we talked about in the last meeting. And we have plans to develop a career website. It's part of being transparent about the process that we move through, the positions available, answering the question, why would anybody want to come here? You know, what's, what's attractive about this? The kinds of people we're looking for and sort of running up those bases as well.
Thank you. And Jamie, if you could start. Yes.
In PBS, during January and February, I had over, I oversaw the student mentoring program and facilitate the MTSS district leadership team. Those are two things that are ongoing. So you'll notice that they are also priorities for March. However, in February for our mentoring program, our mentors and mentees went on a bowling outing, which was so much fun to be a part of and to watch how the relationships are, are growing and evolving between our mentors and mentees. Also in January and February, I provided the oversight for the elementary heat speech lessons. And then just earlier, I guess it's this week or next week, it's hard to keep track. We launched our commitment to DBT training with a session with Alec Miller. We had all of our clinical team and counseling teams present. And it is kicking off a two-year commitment to building that skill set in our counselors, psychologists, and social workers.
Thank you, Jamie. So now we're going to transition to a concern that was brought up by a community member last week and a request to consider AP Mandarin for our students. And so I've asked Adam to speak to that this evening.
All right. So just in terms of some background, this is our current World Language Program, Scope and Sequence from the Decisions booklet. You can see that for the languages that we offer, French, Spanish, and Latin, they terminate with the AP exam, which you can see all the way on the right side. For Chinese, it does not currently. We have a Chinese F program, but we don't offer the AP in Chinese. So Christine and the board had asked me to explore what would, what it would take for us to be able to do that. And we made some progress. So I just wanted to update the board on that. All right. So this is, this is what it would take. And I think we're in a good position to be able to offer AP as an option, AP Chinese language and culture as an option next year and to add it to the Decisions booklet, even though its decision has been published, but we can make that potential edit. So these are the steps that we would take in order to make that happen. We've had some informational meetings with the administration, with the department chair, as well as with the teacher, teachers that this would potentially impact. The faculty, in terms of offering an AP, they have to get kind of acknowledged by the AP, the college board. They would apply for that. And then we would have to do some work with scheduling and logistics in terms of being able to offer it concurrently with five or as a separate course. We have to do some work with that. There is some accreditation steps that we typically go through with NCAA. Then we'd make some updates to the Decisions book, inform students and parents that this is an option and let them kind of re-select depending on what class they would like to take. And then make sure our faculty is well-prepared through some college board training, college board enter, or offers some training in June and also in the, over the summer. So we would have a, ask the faculty member to sign up for that. So those would be the steps. But I think we're, we're well-positioned to be able to offer this next year.
So that is the end of the superintendent's update. And so I just want to highlight some upcoming events between now and our next meeting. And so we have our fifth grade parent orientation on Thursday. Again, we have no school on Friday. Bella's presenting Grease at Seven Bridges on Friday and Saturday this week. Modified sports begin on Monday. And then our next Board of Education meeting is next Wednesday. And we'll be in the same location to help support our theater program, which is readying the stage for their musical. And, and so that is the end of the superintendent's update. So now we're going to move into our component budget presentations tonight. And I want to thank Adam and Jamie and Josh and Karen and Jamie Block for being here this evening. So we'll move through these and then at the end we'll take questions from the board or you can stop us through the presentation if there's a particular slide that you have a question on. So here we go.
All right. So we're going to start with a curriculum and instruction budget. And we always, as we do every year, we frame our curriculum and instruction budget around the board's strategic questions. So I know you know them, so I won't read through them, but I did want to let you know that we do ground this work in those strategic questions that the board has. The first being about budget and operations, the second, teaching and learning, and the third, the social emotional learning. From there, we also use the six priorities to focus our work. So for now, we are going through a strategic planning process, as has been mentioned. So these priorities will be updated, but the priorities remain at this time. Using instructional space to amplify learning, district-wide assessment practices, social emotional learning and curriculum alignment, technology as a tool to personalize learning and then equitable affirming and culturally responsive learning environments. So we have a vision and goals for teaching and learning, and you see them up there on the, on the screen. I don't think any of that will come to a surprise for our community or the board with regard to engaging, meaningful inquiry-based inventive kind of teaching and learning that includes cooperation, et cetera. So that's, that's kind of our, our goal. And then our CNI goals include innovative teaching and leading through inspiring professional development, rigorous instruction, and powerful, relevant, and culturally responsive curriculum. So our, our hope is that we put together a budget, and I think we did, that will support those things. In terms of the actual budget numbers, I'll kind of just pull out the main pieces that have kind of gone up or down, just to point those out and talk a little bit about why. You can see the equipment line. I do have a small equipment line that I run through CNI. I generally support new innovative projects. So for example, equipment that might be included in the new SRC or in this case, you do see a small increase as we think about shifting living environment into eighth grade. We are going to have to do some equipment purchases with regard to some dissecting microscopes and things like that. So you see a small increase there, a small decrease in contractual, just $1,000. That overall was, my budget was flat year to year when, when you look at the entire thing. So I was just trying to kind of balance the overall budget. So you see with this slide, there's a total increase of $4,000. So a modded increase, moderate increase here. You do see on the, on my second kind of cluster of numbers, most of them are flat from year to year. I think we can live within those means that we have been for the last couple of years. But you do see an increase in textbooks and I have the slide that will explain that in just a, in just a minute. You see an increase in textbooks by 167,000, which as I said, I'll explain. So this is the overall budget, kind of summarizing the previous slides. And you see that, that increase, that one big increase is textbooks. So I thought it was important to kind of dig into that a little bit and give you a sense of what, what's driving that. The biggest part of that is Teachers College Reading and Writing Project, which is our elementary reading and writing program exclusively. And we rely heavily on it at our, at our middle school level. They've published new units that are more closely aligned to the research, the emerging research in reading and writing. Many of you have heard of kind of the science of, of reading and the reading wars and things like that. So Teachers College has published new units. They were out, you know, kind of mid-year this year. We got a glimpse of some of them towards the beginning of the year, but next year they will all be out. And so you can see the cost of those things. And we think it's the right thing to do for the district to adopt those new units. There's a greater emphasis on kind of word study, on phonics, some of the things that we have been using other programs to help us support over the years. And then you also see we have almost $90,000 for our social studies curriculum. That's a three-year subscription. And we have nearly $60,000 for new living environment resources. That's basically a new living environment textbook that we'll use to support our eighth grade students because we'll have kind of two cohorts of kids taking living environment at a time next year. The current students that are going to be in ninth grade and the students that are moving up into eighth grade. So that's what's driving that increase in the textbook line. I did just highlight a few key pieces with regard to TC and the new units of study and what they have now included. You can see new comprehension research, language research, including support for foundational skills such as grammar, new research on writing, research on knowledge generation. So we'll have, be able to order those books and get them, you know, some professional development for our teachers over the summer and get them in the hands of teachers in the summer and fall. So in terms of what that, what that budget gets us, we have some curriculum highlights that are here. You know, we had mentioned some of the DEI work that we're doing with regard to culturally responsive adjustments to, to many of our resources, algebra at eight and nine, we're still making some adjustments with regard to that curriculum shift, middle school world language work that we're doing with regard to alignment, preparation for our eighth grade living environment shift, ninth and 10th grade English curriculum alignment. We have some new exciting electives at Greeley and the business, business program and other areas. Middle school ELA curriculum revisions, we've been shifting more towards a workshop and revising some of those units. So we've been building up classroom libraries, things like that, and some revisions to the high school business program, which I know Ryan has been a part of as part of our innovation committee. And we're thinking about instructional spaces to support that program. So in terms of some updates to some curriculum materials, these are kind of the recent updates that we have made with regard to, I mentioned those TC units, we're still, we still have phonics first at our K-2 level. We're still going to be implementing benchmark word study, which is three through five, living environment eight, science 21, K-4 Smithsonian Science in grade five. This year was the first year for that. As well as the curriculum budget also supports quite a few technology tools and resources at Teachers. So the CNI budget also supports much of our professional learning that we have through the district. So you can see a list here. I won't go through the whole thing, but we have the Wilson Reading Fellowship, Insight. We pay for them as a consulting firm, district and building equity teams, our literacy program, in-service courses, conferences, workshops, guest speakers, consultants, those things all come out of the CNI budget. So I did want to pull out, I hadn't highlighted these in the past, but I thought it would be neat for you to be able to see. These are, these are in-service courses that are, have been offered by our, mainly by our teachers for teachers and also by our professional developers for teachers. And you can see just a list of how many different options. These were all since July of this last year, the kind of offerings that our teachers have had access to with regard to professional learning. Then you can also see, we, through the curriculum and instruction office, we also support the bringing in of experts, outside consultants, college professors, things like that. So these are some of the authors that we've brought in in the last year to kind of inspire our work across the district. You can see some of the professional learning books that we've used as part of our professional learning sequence. These are all books that we've used with our staff this year. And then you can see finally, the event planning, conference days, unity days, wellness days, PTA program and partnership, et cetera. These are all things that are through the PD team and the CNI budget. So this is just a one final thing to share is this Friday, we have a superintendent conference day. We're excited. We've got four main strands. We've got sustainability. We have technology integration. We have a DEI strand. We have a kind of a business, world economic strand. And this is just a snapshot of the beginning of the day where teachers will be engaged for 45 minutes and a kind of choices of levels around artificial intelligence. And then we have an artificial intelligence panel coming in to, to work with our teachers and kind of share how artificial intelligence is changing the landscape in education. And those things are all supported through the same. So there's just a summary slide on the budget. I can pause if there are any questions or we can move right into technology. I'll leave that up to you. Yeah.
Mr. Kelsey.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for that roll-in tour. That was great. Few questions. So we're going to end up with duplicate biology for a year. But then we won't need that anymore. How are we going to, what are we going to do when we don't need it anymore?
Yeah. So there's, there's some, in terms of duplicate biology, the textbook piece is easier. Most of the textbooks are not paper textbooks. Sometimes we'll buy like a class set of textbooks. The ninth grade teachers don't rely as heavily on, on a resource with regard to like a textbook. Many of them have been teaching living environment for a long time. We thought it was important based on the students and the ages, students and the teachers, in some cases are teaching it as a new subject that they have a really good resource for that. So we're just going to, we're going to do a one-year subscription to that, you know, that resource for this year. So we, that way it's not like a rollover cost. With regard to some of the equipment, the hope is, you know, we will have like an extra set of, just a couple of classes of dissecting microscopes and things like that. The hope is that, yeah, the elective program in ninth grade will continue to use, you know, we haven't defined those courses just yet. We're in that process of developing those courses. But I would imagine there's going to be some life science, like a life science option or options. And those things can be used throughout the science program and plant sciences or, or other, you know, living environment programs, environmental science programs, things like that. So I don't see a lot of like, you know, kind of duplicate waste happening in terms of that double year. But that's a, that's a good question. I appreciate it.
I've got three questions. So you've done number one. Number two is the phonics choice. So is what I was inferring from what you were saying is we're going to wind down phonics first and replace with TC? And just wanted to hear a little of the rationale behind that. Have we been dissatisfied with what we've had? How are we handling that?
Yep. Now, let me, let me clarify. Phonics versus here and staying. There's no plan to discontinue phonics first. TC has a phonics program, which we don't subscribe, we don't use the TC phonics program. So that will continue not to be part of the phonics program. What they've done is they've rewritten their writing and reading units. So there's more explicit instruction in phonics, which we think will support the phonics. That's right. So you're going to get the phonics first as part of the phonics and also the benchmark word study, which we use in three, four, and five. But the TC units are written in a way, so there's more explicit teaching of word study phonics. And so we think it will be, we haven't, we haven't seen like the, the parallel there, but we think it's going to be better aligned. But yeah, we don't plan to adopt the phonics program from at this point.
Yeah, I misunderstood. Okay. So then, and you didn't put a duration on that. Whereas you did put duration on some of the social studies and other things. When you buy from TC, is it one and done or are we talking the same subscription kind of model?
Yeah, no, TC does have some things that you subscribe to. We subscribe to the professional development, for example. But this is, you, once you buy the units, you have the units and you can continue to use them. And they do have some online resources. Sometimes they'll have, for example, some, some of their mini lessons will be a subscription base. You can access their mini lessons by buying that subscription. But the bulk of this purchase is like a one and done. We can use it for, for many years. And they haven't updated their curriculum as frequently as some of their vendors. So I don't anticipate this being, they've made some small updates and they'll just pass those out. They'll hand those out as resources without any cost. But since, since I've been working with TC for about seven years, this is the first like real overhaul that I've seen.
Okay. And then my third one, easy one, just on the business that you kind of foreshadowed, some of the business stuff. Are we going to try virtual enterprise this coming year? And like, should that be reflected in here somehow? Or is that just kind of subsumed within a series of elective things that we're talking about?
Yeah, no, virtual enterprise is in the, in the Decisions booklet this year. So it's a really neat opportunity and, and the, there are, there's a lot of student interest. We already have the student interest for the, from the Decisions book. So there's certainly enough students to run like a full class and probably even more than a full class. Virtual enterprise, for those that haven't heard it, is a, is a course that's designed around students creating a business. I know you know this from your work on the Innovation.
I just wanted everyone to hear.
Yeah, the students have the opportunity to create like a quasi fictitious business as part of a, like a business program in the high school. And then they run that business and they interact with other high schools that have a virtual enterprise class. And then those businesses will actually like buy and sell things to each other. They'll do business with each other. So the high school, it's a whole network of high schools. We're the only one in this like real close vicinity. I think the only one in Westchester that's going to have a virtual enterprise program. But there are several around there. There are quite a few on the island. For example, we think there will be more soon here in Westchester. But we think it's a great opportunity for kids to run a business. And then within that class, they have roles that you typically find in a business. You have like someone that's in charge of HR, someone that's in charge of marketing or a team in charge of marketing. And, and they, the students will design this business and then they'll interact with the other businesses by just like businesses interact. So it's, it's a pretty neat opportunity. And the, the students were involved in like proposing this course to Dr. Seppi and, and kind of working through the details and doing the research and made a presentation to myself. And then Mr. Block was in as part of that presentation. So yeah, it ended up, it ended up being an opportunity for students' voices to be heard and, and in the program of studies. And our business teachers were involved in that as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
I, actually, Ryan asked most of my questions, but I just, which is great. Follow-up on the, the bio textbook. That was my only question is when we're ordering for this coming year, is it the same textbook? We're just getting more or are we getting, like, will we be ultimately have two different resources to pull from?
We'll, we'll have two different resources to pull from the, there's a, there's a small committee that Mr. Olivas, he has, I'm not exactly sure where he is on the timing, but he was planning to, to run like a textbook evaluation process like we typically do. I know we'll, we'll usually at the end of that, we'll present to the board about the process and the choice that we made. So it'll be, it'll be a new choice and we'll have to decide that. We haven't, we haven't had a strong push from our high school team to like want to have a consistent textbook in that way, in that same way. It would certainly, we'd be open to that discussion if they wanted to move in that direction. But for a year, I'm not sure it would make a lot of sense.
No, I was just going to say, it's funny, but Ryan, when he mentioned about phonics first, because that, that was one of my favorite presentations and introductions in this district and I, I love that program. So I, I really wanted to make sure that it was still being supported because I think it's fantastic. And that was only my, my question too, and whether there, like, if we do end up with more materials, whatever, is, is there a resale market? Like how we, when we move our other computer stuff? Like, I mean, I don't even know if it's going to come into that in terms of, shouldn't there be like too many microscopes or books or anything like that? But I assume that'll all get worked out. I understand that there should have grown pains of moving that, but that, that was it.
I just want to, Lucy Cawkins has created her own phonics program of reaction to concerns expressed primarily through the city schools regarding the acquisition of language and the ability to read fluently absent that program. When Adam chaired and Jamie worked with the phonics committee, they looked at that as a potential option, but that was not selected by our, by that team. And so we're really committed to phonics first. And so I don't see us not supporting that program in the future to move to Teachers College. If we were to do that, there would be a committee that would make that decision.
All right. Great. So now we're going to move over to Josh. Welcome for our technology presentation.
Welcome for our technology presentation.
So our technology department budget is all crafted through our vision. We've seen this vision forward, it's unchanged. It includes our instructional, our compliance, our infrastructure and our education law 2D compliance that we are required to do. There are a lot of components that go into the budget, including our infrastructure, our professional learning, our learning platforms, our data, our storage, our, and everything. And our hope is that all of that is intersects with an innovative teaching and learning environment. Here, so some things that our budget funds is our teaching and learning. We really believe strongly in a mobile environment for our students where you could see that they're working everywhere, that our technology is literally fading into the background. It's part of our curriculum, it's meshed within our curriculum and our instruction. We also, as part of it, are steam spaces, which are now maturing and use. If you go into all of them, they are humming, you hear saws, you hear laser cutters, you smell the fumes of going through the air filtration systems. And it, no, it through, through the air filtration systems in a good way, right? So all of that functioning, I think, is all really, really important to our, to our budget. And it's really exciting that's happening. We have our three digital learning goals that are, that are really important to us about supporting our students to be thoughtful learners, preparing them to become collaborative citizens of the world, and also making sure that the value of our instructional time is used really, really in a strong way. The impacts over the past years that we've had in our budget have been significant, right? So cybersecurity is a huge piece of our budget. It's really approaching a large percentage. Education Law 2D is adding the compliance component. Device refreshes and now infrastructure upgrades also are all part of the impacts. So for cybersecurity, last year, we hired a company that does 24/7 management of our and threat awareness and monitoring of our network. And they at times at three in the morning do detect something and mitigate it. And we don't know until the morning where it used to, our tech team used to be up at three in the morning getting text messages. And they're doing, ponderance is doing a fantastic job. What we're seeing now is, as our next step is most of our, most of our incoming is coming in through email. And so our current email backend system doesn't have the artificial intelligence linked to it that Barracuda, which is a system that we're going to contract with, does, which can really start to decipher which emails are phishing, decipher which emails are junk, decipher which emails are spam and give us a lot better and granular control over our email system so that more of the emails we want are coming into our inboxes and less of the emails that we don't want are never making it to our inboxes. And it can learn from all of our actions. The other piece that this does is the, the latest threat that we've seen is around domain fraud and domain spoofing. So people registering Chappaqua schools with three O's. This, and then sending us and trying to fish us through that and looking at our directory and creating email addresses and sending them to other people. So this system monitors that and protects us from that. So this, the decision for this is, I, I think, one of the most pronounced next steps for us in cybersecurity that we have. As always, we're going to refresh devices. We keep our four-year refreshment cycle for our students. First grade and second grade will receive new iPads and fifth and sixth grade will also receive new devices. And as iPads have innovated over time and become a lot more lap, like laptops, our fifth and sixth grade students next year are going to receive iPad 10s rather than surfaces. So we're able to emulate the exact environment they're currently using with a lot more creativity and a lot more collaboration through that device over the surfaces. And we'll actually be saving some funds by doing that. And then come seventh and eighth grade over the following two years, we'll be able to have them utilize MacBooks that they then take into high school with them. So we're at a place in our budget right now that with no cost to us, we're able to change our middle school model and create it a lot more like our elementary schools in that creativity vein and keep everything flowing all the way up through the high school for the next few years. So our count of devices, you're going to see a large increase of iPads because that's two grade levels. And the MacBook increases because our teachers are going to receive MacBooks at the middle school. And that's where the decrease in the PC desktops and the PC laptops come in. And as always, we're trying to limit the number of printers in the district. And my goal of always reducing is in there and I hope to continue that so that as we rely more on digital things. The budget wise, you're going to see here that there's a decrease in our contractual services line and a decrease in our technology training line. This is because we have been, unfortunately. This is because we have been partnering with BOCs a lot more. So we, we, there's two BOCs that we get to work with for technology. We have Lyric, which has been primarily who we've worked with in the past. A consortium of a few groups of schools in Northern Westchester have created a model schools program at Putnam, Northern Westchester for us to use for purchasing, which makes life a lot easier for us for EdLa 2D. They also don't have the same fees that Lyric has. So we are able to move our services through them as a pass-through purchasing. And then we get over 60% aid back on many of those items. Whereas with Lyric, the service fees outweighed the benefit of that. So, so this group that we got to work with, so you see a increase of $225,000 in there. The reason is we don't have our RFS, our request for services from Putnam, Northern Westchester yet. We expect that this is going to go down by about $50,000, which is going to start to balance out the budget. So as of today, this is the increase that we have on paper at this moment. But once we get the RFS from Putnam, Northern Westchester, that's going to decrease. Our highlights, we're going to be replacing displays. We're hoping by the end of the summer, we don't have any projectors in the school district except in large spaces. And we're able to utilize TVs now that are on wheels that teachers can move around and get more blackboard and whiteboard space out of it. They are now steady enough and light enough that we're able to do that. So that's a great, huge technology in helping us defront our classrooms. And with all of our furniture and our spaces, this is a really great advancement that we have. And then our cybersecurity, our contractual services with Actra who handle all of our help desk and network and database is all in there. So this is the highlights of, of our plan. And then I also want to, again, I started to mention, we're all going to be able to offset our budget this year by, we're in year six now of our one-to-one program. So we have devices that have retained a significant amount of value. So we anticipate getting about $100, $225,000 back in the next school year for all of our, all of our returned items and sent back. And then our BOC state aid, which then comes in the following school year, is when we get reimbursed. So we did some services last year, so we're going to receive some money back next year. Once we have that information, that'll also offset the technology budget.
Any questions for Josh?
Sorry. Um, I have two quick questions. So based on what you had up there in terms of device refreshing and trading out. So we're going to be Apple K-12 that is the goal within a couple of years as the kids get.
So we'll be Apple K-12, K-8 in our middle schools over the next two years. And then the high school really is a hybrid environment, right? So because really is such a fluid environment and students bring their own devices, teachers use things for lots of things, we'll likely be moving more towards a Mac environment as time goes on. But we're likely going to be that hybrid environment, like really for a variety of things. But we're also piloting using Macs for our clerical staff or elementary schools now so that we won't have any PCs in the elementary schools at all as we continue to shift that. And as they, as they're more able to be used for business functions as well. They have been a really huge support to us. Even yesterday, I was at the, our team of engineer, sales engineer met me at the Apple store to go over everything for a full day while we had the snow day. And like, that's how much they've supported the work that we do in the district.
So really we'll still be bringing their own device, but if students don't have a device, we'd likely will be giving them a MacBook in the future instead of a Surface Pro.
I misunderstood. I thought that when we were rolling out the MacBooks to the 78, they were then taking those through.
No, we're going to move them up and then cycle them back and as students need them.
Okay, sure. And then this isn't really a budget question. But when you talked about some of the cybersecurity issues we've been having and people phishing and using, you know, fake web addresses and what have. Do we ever figure out who's doing these things or is?
We report them. We don't normally get back information about who, who is doing it. Rarely are they found because we've never been in an instance where there's been a successful event. So when we report it, we don't have, have that information.
Okay, thank you.
No, don't.
Um, also kind of on the cybersecurity piece, are, do we currently do or have we considered, given that it's email routing of some of the phishing stuff, we doing like targeted trainings? How, how does that work and does it even potentially flow to students or?
So we do targeted training fairly often. And those that are, click on those, receive a video that they watch. Or if it's multiple times, they receive a visit for some one-to-one counseling from us. So that happens periodically over the course of the year randomly. That's happened for a couple of years now. We have not done targeted training with students like that. We've done, we've talked about cyber safety and cybersecurity throughout our K-8, our K-12 model with students.
My thinking. No, I, I, I appreciate that question from Ryan because I think that the, you have to dive deep into that. I mean, you do, first of all, I want to say like, you do amazing job. Like we, we are very lucky in this district and I don't know if any, if everyone's aware of how much work is done on this and why we're in a position that we are. And that's thanks to you and, and the staff here that we really have not what been, been in a good place with all the cybersecurity stuff. But the, the, you know, they get more and more sophisticated. And even, and it's not just, you know, me, you know, I have to do this work with my parents. I still even, and, and even my kids, because they're tricky. And even there are things where you try and unsubscribe to all like spam things you get. And sometimes you're really not even supposed to go in and unsubscribe or whatever. So I'm wondering how we do that to try and just minimize our exposure, you know?
Yeah, so this is where, so the two things, one is training. And the other piece is now these artificially intelligent bots that we can utilize that can start to detect them before they ever get to us is going to be really, is really important.
And some of the new stuff there, like you're.
That we're getting, right. So like an example of, of, this new program is going to be able to database our contacts. So we would be able to make sure that we get, receive anything from anybody that's in our community. But it will put in sort of, if someone sends something to, let's say, more than 12 people in the school district, it'll start to evaluate whether is this a real person? Is it coming from a real server? Is the server coming from somewhere in the country? Is it, so it's going to start asking all these questions before it gets to your box. And then the other piece of this is that it has link protection. So even if something does get to you and you click on a link, there's another layer of detection before you click on that link, before it goes out there. So it, so it's like twofold, it's education and it's also we're constantly going to keep.
Technology that you didn't even know was doing it for you, was doing it.
Right. And we're going to, we'll keep updating while people keep, as new things are invented, other people are going to attempt to forward it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And now I'd like to invite up Karen and Jamie, who will give the People Personnel Services budget report.
Good evening. PPS includes special ed related services and 504 plans. But because 504 plans are accommodation plans, this budget really speaks specifically to special education and related services and the costs associated with them. And we tend to start with an organization sheet. I think it originated when this structure was new. But the, the importance of it now is that there are a lot of people that are involved in the creation of IEPs and making decisions and thoughtful decisions about kids and their programs. And so I think it's important to acknowledge them. And I would like to acknowledge Karen Smith, the Director of Special Education, who is up here, supporting me and participating in this presentation. All of our decision-making, including the creation of this budget, is grounded in our commitment to inclusion. And when we think of our commitment to inclusion, we're thinking about educating students in the least restrictive environment, providing equitable opportunities and specialized instruction and making sure that we emphasize and support each student's academic and social development. We don't have pictures in our presentation or in our slides because we need to protect, protect the privacy and identity of our students. And I think that there's a saying that goes like a picture's worth a thousand words. Now, I promise I'm not going to give a thousand words to each star up there. But I do think it's important to highlight a couple of things. And you can create a picture in your mind as I'm, as I'm describing these important and special moments of the year in special education. Our Pathway students went on a field trip to Lang's Deli, providing as Chappaqua-ish an experience as you can. And the cherry on the top of that experience is they ran into President Clinton. So if I could provide a picture, it would be a picture of our Pathway students at Lang's with President Clinton. Another picture that I would wish to share with you is a picture, a picture of our Wilson Reading program. We have 10 teachers currently going through the Level One certification and, and the practicum. So I wish I could show you a picture of a teacher and a student engaged in that work together, both of them learning a great deal as they go through that process. And another picture that I might share with you is a picture of our holiday meet and greet, which is one of several opportunities that Karen and I had along with our CSE chairs to connect with our parents in the community and make sure that they were a part of the educational process. So when we were creating the budget for the current year that we're in, we, we set some priorities for the work that we would accomplish this year. One is this was the first year with algebra in eighth grade where we provided integrated co-teaching in those classes. And the thinking around that was that the algebra is a regions level course historically provided in our high school where it was an integrated co-teach model. And so we made it a priority this year to support the teachers in providing a co-teaching model in algebra in both of our middle schools. We also provided lots of different professional development opportunities, including the Wilson Reading, which I just spoke about, including the Understanding Our Diverse Learners program, which I shared with the board earlier tonight, where a group of teachers who really wanted to understand the needs of our learners better come together after school to meet with specialists from the Child Mind Institute and to also meet with students and parents of children who are living with those learning challenges to better understand how we can support them in our classrooms. We had set a priority for a multi-tiered system of support, which was also a recommendation that was made in both of the audits. We had the special ed audit and the DEI audit. This is the, the system that kind of sits beneath special ed. It's the, the foundation on which special education sits. And it's how we identify students as they are encountering challenges in their learning and providing support for them in the classroom. And then again, in the least restrictive situation possible. So many times we're able to address students' learning needs without having to reach the level of special education. And we continue to develop that system as we go into next year. We are ongoingly looking at our IEP development and working to strengthen that, help our teachers in doing that. And the same is true for our transition planning for students who will be graduating from here and need some support in post-secondary planning. So for, as we think about next year, many of those priorities still exist, that they're ongoing. We, we have. Uh, we, we have identified three areas, one at each level, that will be a particular focus for our teachers and for our programs in the district. And one is, in our elementary schools, we are requiring that any student with an autism diagnosis will receive social skills training as a mandated service on their IEP. We are adding integrated co-teaching in our middle schools for English, Language Arts, and Math every day, and Science and Social Studies every other day. And then we are focusing on what resource room looks like in our high schools. The professional development category or priority for the next year's budget has some of the same things as you saw on the previous slide. Um, and as I shared, we, we did launch the DBT Training, which we are really excited about providing our clinicians and counselors with skills to meet the needs of students, social, emotional needs as we move forward. And we are looking to continue to work on our website to make sure that it's a place where parents can get updated information. And again, further developing and concentrating on our multi-tiered system of support. So one of the things that I think gets really tricky in, in, in our slides and in our presentation is the data comes from different places. And different places make data available at different times or use data from different points in the year. So I'll talk through that as I go. But this, these classification rates are, are published by the state. And what's, um, the, the classification rates for this year are not out yet. So we look back. And as you can see, our classification rates for the past two years have been flat. And then when we think about our students that are classified, they fall into one of the classification areas that are listed on this slide up here. And what I think is particularly noteworthy about this is you will notice that our students classified with autism shows a pretty significant increase for us. And our students who have been classified with an emotional disturbance has doubled. Now, it was only four, from four to eight. But both of those categories seem to be trends that are not just here in Chappaqua, but that they are both increasing in prevalence and something for us to keep an eye on as we move forward. And as we continue to plan for the needs that our students are gonna have. We tend to have most of our students, and still do according to this, um, that are in that learning disability classification area and then other health impairment. Uh, sometimes our students with autism are classified as other health impairment. Even the students who are classified as other health impairment, if they have an autism diagnosis, will receive social skills training as an elementary level student. So, um, Ben's Day, as you know, is the, I think it's the first Wednesday in October every year. So a lot of our data now, the next couple of slides are gonna focus on Ben's Day. And, um, we had, this, this was our number of classified, S CSE placements on Ben's Day. We had three hundred and sixty-nine. Most of our students receive their education in district. And we have twenty-one students who receive their instruction and education out of district. And I'll talk more about those students on the next slide. And we have two students who need to remain in their home for all of their instruction and services. So the students that are placed out of district fall into these categories that are on this slide. Some are in BOSI's programs, seven of them. We have some that received their program in another public school. So there might be another public school that provides a program that we don't have here, and we send our students to those programs. Sometimes we have students who are placed in approved private day programs. Um, when we, when we say that, sometimes people get in their minds that we're sending them to like a local private school. And that really isn't the case. They are usually specialized state-approved private schools like Anderson or Clearview and others like that. And our most restrictive environment that we have is a residential placement. It's when a student's needs are so significant that they are not able to live at home and need to live in a facility. And we, at the time, on Ben's Day in October, um, had three students in a residential placement. So again, eh, you know, I started to talk a little bit about us thinking about how we project forward, how we start to be better able to plan for what's coming. So this is, oh, this slide tells us a lot about, you know, how our students are doing and, and some of the difficulties that their, our teachers are seeing. We had from, so now we're looking at different dates. We had from February of twenty twenty-two to February of twenty twenty-three, seventy-one students were referred to the CSE. Of those seventy-one students that were referred to the CSE, twenty-four of them were classified. And ten of them are still pending. We have not yet had their meeting. So it's a big number. So it, it, it speaks of, it speaks to the importance of our multi-tiered system of support. Because some kids, teachers or, or parents are seeing that there's a learning difficulty. If they don't get classified by the Committee on Special Education to receive specialized services, there's still a need that needs to be met at the building level, and that would be, uh, the role of the multi-tiered system of support. We also have students who transfer in, and this is kind of like sometimes the curve ball that were thrown in the middle of a school year or at the start of a school year. This happens without much notice and without really giving us the opportunity to plan. And when you look at the number twelve, next twelve in and of itself, you might say, you know, that that's not significant. But twelve students that come in that have a variety of needs, um, can present a challenging situation for the district. Last year, you see, we had thirty-three. That was a huge number. And while we have some coming in, we don't have as many moving out of, of, of our school district with IEPs. Um, and then the significance of that category of transfer students requiring an out-of-district placement, some of our students move into our district already in a placement that can be quite costly to the district, that we just have to assume that cost, um, and, and maintain them in the placement that they're in. The other, the other area that we need to pay really close attention to is CPSE. And CPSE is, um, it's a, it's a state program that is managed by the school district. So we don't, we don't pay the cost of the services for our preschoolers, yet we manage them. And in some ways, it's really helpful that we do, because it gives us a sense of what's coming up. And so we, we're just starting to really look at this data. And it's a little tricky. This, I feel like looking at this chart can be a little tricky, because when you go from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, twenty-three, there are some kids of that fifty-six that are reflected in that ninety. So, right? So if you had a two-year-old or a three-year-old that became a four-year-old, thirty-year-old during that. So it's not ninety new students, but, but it's a ninety, ninety students that we have currently classified that are receiving special education support as a preschooler. Now, not every student who transitions from CPSE to CSE will maintain an IEP and special ed services. But it's something for us to watch. And what we see here is more students, considerably more students are being identified as preschoolers with a disability. And we need to make sure that we're thinking about how we're going to accommodate that moving forward. So that, we're gonna get to the part that's really thinking about, um, the proposal for the budget. And the special education budget has the components that are listed up there. We're gonna talk a little bit about contractual services. We're gonna talk very, um, superficially about re, about salaries, but how they impact the special ed program and the special ed budget. We'll talk about tuition for our students who are placed out of district. Transportation is embedded in it. It is not, it's not taken out or highlighted as a separate issue, but it's something that we need to consider as a cost, what we're thinking about our students. And our extended school year program is the program that we offer during the summer for those students who are at risk of progress, of, at risk of progression. So when we were, when we were crafting our proposed budget, we, what we did is we looked at our estimated year end. Um, it's, uh, I mean, uh, our estimated year-end expenditure. And we compared that to where we, uh, what we'll need for next year. So those are kind of the numbers that are most important to look at. It's really hard to predict what the special ed costs are gonna be for next year as we're sitting here today. We are in the middle of annual reviews. Um, parents are meeting with the teams at the school district to see what kids are gonna need for next year. And so we're basing our proposed budget on our year-end estimated expenditure. And so what you'll see up there are the different categories of salaries and the other expenses, which will be outlined in more detail on the next, on the next slide, and then the tuition process. So here you'll see those other expenses. Most of them were, we're keeping, all of them were keeping flat. These are the things that are, um, that were in just that other expenses category on the prior slide. And here they are teased out, so you can see each one individually. What's particularly, um, unique to special education is we do receive funding from a couple of different sources. And Karen is gonna speak to you about, um, the funding sources and the money that we get, that special ed gets to help support our students.
So the rates that are allocated for reimbursement are not set by us. They're set by the state. They tell us how much we can get back. When you look at the IDA grants, those are grants that are federal grants that are dispersed from the state. So the state tells us, this is how much you can give back in a six-eleven or a six-nineteen grant. Six-eleven grants are for students ages five to twenty-one, and six-nineteen grants are for, uh, students ages three to twenty-one. So they also cover our younger kids. So we received in allocations this year, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars for those grants. In addition, there was a secondary supplemental grant called an ARP, the American Rescue Plan. And it was part of the six-eleven and six-nineteen. You had to apply separately for it. But we were awarded an additional one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars through that. State aid again is, um, it's a complicated reimbursement rate that's set by the state for our high-cost students. And essentially what happens is the state sets a, a cap at how much a student should cost to educate. And then they give us a percentage back over that amount. Um, so this year, we received one point nine million dollars back in that. And then the third one, um, on the slide was Medicaid reimbursement. And Medicaid reimbursement is simply based on students who are Medicaid eligible. And if students are Medicaid eligible, we're entitled to apply to the state for reimbursement for related services and skilled nursing. And so we, um, last year did not recoup as much as we would have wanted to. Um, and this year we increased it fairly substantially. Um, it's really only based on kids who are eligible for those Medicaid funds. So again, there's a maximum amount that we can get back for that, for that Medicaid reimbursement. But those are the three funding sources that we try to maximize when we're getting money back. And if you look at the next slide, again, it's just really a breakdown of how they get a rate. The state sets a rate for an out-of-district placement, and then we receive a certain amount back above that rate. Um, and then the place that we do get some additional funding back is through the extended school year or summer school. And that's also, um, that's a little bit higher. So we are allowed to expense our summer school and get back some additional funding from that as well. So this is, this is the way the state figures out the slide before and reimburses us based on those, those rates that they set.
Slide from Karen and Jamie. So are there any questions from the board? Brian has two.
We'll start at the end, start with Hillary and go work this way. Um, before I get to my question, I just want to say that a lot of what you presented for going forward for next year looks amazing. Um, the Child Mind Institute work just seems so incredible, both for our teachers and our kids and families. It's such a holistic approach, and it sounds absolutely amazing. Um, as does the Autism Social Skills Programming on the elementary level and the resource room in the, the high school level. My budget question, and I, I don't know if this can be answered, but I know that as a board, starting really now, but throughout the year, we, we approve increases, um, for kids placed out of district, primarily our kids who are placed in other public programs. Um, mostly throughout Westchester in, in terms of increases in the services that they get, or because they are the, the district of location and they are providing some of the related services or what have you. I, I guess, how, how do we formulate sort of a best guess on what the real, real numbers are gonna be versus, I feel like we, we approve them, and it's clearly nobody's fault. It's just a guessing game. But I'm wondering how that, that math kind of works, because we so often see increases that obviously we're gonna approve. The kids are getting services, but it, it just seems like a very, a, a variable that's very much out there.
So I'll, I'll help answer that one. I'd like to carry on. But well, but as the finance guy, I need to be very clear. You know, the services that we offer our students in special education are based on the needs of the students. They're not based on finances, right? So, you know, I'm very clear about that. What we do to project those expenses, though, is we have to look at our current population. So I spent quite a bit of time with Karen and Jamie's office, trying to understand who we have out of district. Do we anticipate a similar program for that student next year? And we built our budget around that with some contingencies in place for kids that we're watching to, to go out of district. We were off this year. And, and we were off, because when they met with the CSE and they found out of district placements for those students, we might've had more kids in, I, I'm more of a very private placements rather than BOSI's placements. So you'll, you'll see budget transfers coming to you, because we thought it was a, a, eh, the BOSI's program, they actually ended up in a private school program. So we, we moved the, the money to follow the student and where the expenses come from. Um, so it's, it's a very delicate kind of guessing game of where we think the, the students' needs will be. As Jamie and Karen brought up too, when students move into the district, you know, we, we kind of assume the program that they currently have. So we, we just need to adjust our budget accordingly.
We also have to bank enough money to anticipate potentially a residential student coming in, which could cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we, we have to be smart about how we allocate our funding to plan for that level of support if someone moves into the district and it's necessary.
And I think the other thing is you can see that we really wanna have a, an effective and efficient multi-tiered system of support so that we can start to project those kids who are receiving tier-free interventions could possibly be CSE referrals and, and end up with IEPs, because the gen ed program isn't quite meeting their needs. So we're looking to look at CPSE more closely, to look at who's coming up and who's growing up in our, in our community, attending preschool programs with IEPs, and how might they, what might they need when they get to our school? So we're looking, we're trying to figure out some of those ways to be, to get closer, I guess, and to be able to better predict what we're gonna encounter when the, when students arrive here.
But I think the one thing that we can't predict is our kids with mental health issues. And the reason why is because our little ones who come in with a very defined diagnosis, we, we might be able to anticipate their trajectory and start to build programs that they need and really meet their needs in district. But we tend to find out about kids with mental health issues in very different ways. They often are not classified and they can go very quickly from non-classified to very, very supportive programs. And so that's another group that it can be hard for us to kind of, um, anticipate as, uh, as an expense.
All right. So yeah, two questions. So one specific one about the integrated co-teaching at the middle school level. I, I heard you say co-teaching is working with the algebra, and I'm thinking about the science coming to Bell. And I didn't hear you say that we were maybe, eh, we're planning to the expense of a similar approach. You've talked about science as an every other day thing. So can you say a little more about what we're thinking there?
So if the living environment, eh, I'm, I'm assuming it's still an F.
Yeah.
Um, is going to move to eighth grade and it's a science level. Um, is going to move to eighth grade and it's a science level course. It will be integrated, will provide integrated co-teaching for that course as well.
Okay.
In eighth grade.
Yeah, no, of course. Second question is a little bit more of a big picture thing. When you look at those numbers that you showed about, you know, we're either experiencing more issues or spotting more issues or some combination of the two. Is the, from a budgetary standpoint, longer term, would you anticipate that we should continue to plan for heightened spotting of issues and more capture and dealing with more things? Or is there a thought that by doing multi-tier that we catch more things sooner? And it's actually less expensive to serve them over time if we get better at it? Do you understand what I'm asking?
I think I, I think I understand what you're asking and I think my answer is both.
Okay.
There is a both. I think that we will, with our multi-tiered system of support, we will catch needs and we will be able to address them at, in a less expensive way through general education. So I think yes, that's going, I think yes, that will happen. The other, I, what I think you were referring to was students with autism or students who are having some of the more mental health issues.
Or just the increase we're seeing, I mean, just looking at the preschool numbers, like again, you might chalk that up to pandemic issues. You might chalk it up to all, all kinds of different things, but.
So we would like, so what we would like to be able to say it's a pandemic issue. What we're hearing is it is a pandemic issue, but that it's going to continue and then not be a pandemic issue anymore. And we spoke today with the, the autism specialist at Child Mind and she said there's an increased prevalence of autism that is now looking different than original, than it originally did. And, and it was just coincidental that I was presenting tonight what I think is a significant increase in that classification area here. So I think we have to spot, I think it's both. I think the answer is really both.
Can I share three things we're thinking about? So first, I want to thank Jamie and Karen for responding to the special education audit. So a lot of what reflecting is reflected in there base is based on that, um, analysis that was done two years ago. And they're moving forward and they're addressing these issues without a substantial increase in their budget. But there are certain things that we are thinking about. Uh, the first is we're thinking about, um, our incoming kindergarteners and how many of those, our students will need services, which we don't know yet. And if that's going to impact our sectioning in our three buildings. So that's why it's important we have those three contingency positions, not just for enrollment, but because we have an increased number of preschool students that we believe may qualify for services coming into kindergarten. We're just not sure on what that number looks like yet, but we're thinking about that. Uh, we're also thinking about our elementary program. And if we can support our students who have, um, who are autistic in a different way. And what would that look like in the future? So we're not presenting that tonight, but that's something that we're talking about. And the third thing we're, we're, we're speaking a lot about is that we have students at the middle school being supported by the TSP program at the high school. So is there something that we need to do differently at the middle school students to offer a similar level of support? And how do we do that within the current, um, budget structure? So the, those are three pockets of conversation, I think, address what you're, um, speaking to, uh, Ryan in a, in a real tangible way. Um, because we're grappling with, uh, issues very differently today than we did, um, before we all went out for the pandemic. And I don't know if it would have happened or not, but the reality is it's, it's happening. And so we need to, we need to continue to think about, um, how do we support all of our students? And do we have to rethink that support in different ways based on what we're seeing currently? It's a therapeutic support program, so it really, um, it serves a lot of different needs. Um, regular ed students can move into there after, um, a, a period out, out of school for a variety of reasons to receive support before transitioning back into class. Um, we have some students that have it built in their schedule who aren't special education students who just need, um, primarily executive, executive functioning support. Um, there's a therapeutic component within it to support students who are, maybe are experiencing some, um, emotional need where, uh, a break from the traditional academic setting is, um, important for them to be able to transition back in effectively based on what's happening within their, in their environment. So that's just a real brief synopsis of it, but it's a really, um, supportive and effective way to support kids who need it in the moment. And we're finding that there are more students at the middle level that need it in the moment than they, than they've had in the past. And so are there any other questions?
Um, just, um, the other thing, and again, this may be Andrew to answer because it's, it's a financial thing which, you know, we've talked over the years about, you know, you mentioned state aid, but, but saying we get it and actually receiving it are two different things. So, you know, I'm curious in terms of delay percentage, et cetera, like are we really, are they giving us the aid that they should? Because that's been a longstanding issue. We've been foreentitled to it. It's not forthcoming.
So, so the aid that we should be a, a debated topic, right? But from a mathematics perspective, you know, we, we, uh, we submit our, our special information on a monthly basis and that cost information and it's calculated in an aid output that we do see on an annual basis. And it is funded to us annually. Whether we believe the level of funding from the state is appropriate for the level of service we give. I think there could be some debate about that because the programs we offer are costly and we don't get, uh, dollar for dollar, you know, um, the aid payment for that. Um, we are finding it's interesting, our, our aid ratios are different based on our out of, out of district placements. So we're seeing that, that is a unintended financial benefit shifting some of our programs to some of these private, uh, replacements. Because the aid ratio and those tensions are actually higher than the public placement. So it's not an intentional shift in where the kids go, just a byproduct of, of the aid formula and what's happening.
We don't have any control of.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Last presentation of the evening.
And Jamie has a clicker. Who's got the clicker?
Oh, yeah.
Jamie, Jamie.
Welcome, Jamie.
Thank you. This is, I, I need a seatbelt. I'm not used to sitting down. I need to look around them like. Uh, my name is Jamie Block and, uh, this is, um, about to start my first spring season here. And it's been a, a, a great, uh, trip so far and I've really enjoyed it. And I'm proud to be here tonight to talk about the athletic program and the financial overview. First, you know, every time you, anytime you start off a season or sport or anything, you have goals and you have strategies and priorities to get you there. And everything our, as athletes and coaches, we have priorities and values as well. You know, I'm a firm believer in that we're ambassadors of the community, no matter where we are, whether we're on the field or wherever we're wearing the orange and blue or, or the blue and white. Um, we represent the Chappaqua community and I think integrity is something very important and we value our Chappaqua community. And we always want goals of empathy, gratitude and humility are very important to us. Just as an organizational chart, we're, we're, we're a pretty big organization, uh, from facility wise, from our physical education staff and our health staff to all of our teams, over a hundred coaches and, you know, numerous teams. And we're also housing a good portion of the recreation department in town as well as all the youth programs right here and helping to manage all that. So it's definitely a large organization that works very hard each day, um, to provide the best we can for all the, the entire community. So just based on some participation numbers through our registration in the fall, we were about eight hundred and forty six. It's winter, five hundred and fifty four. The spring is still an estimation as we still have middle school sports to start on Monday. Put us to over two thousand students, almost twenty one hundred students. And I, I think that's, um, a tribute to a district that believes in educating the whole child. You know, we believe in the arts, we believe in music, we believe in the academics and we certainly believe in athletics and, and physical activity for children. And I think that demonstrates a real commitment to collaboration to the community. Our academic programs are health and physical education required programs. And we, we work to, to educate the physically literate child and through all different means, movement and activities. And it's great to see student athletes here and all types of students just being physically active. I think as parents even in the room here, we know that our children are not as active today unless we're paying for it. That's really, you know, unless we're taking them somewhere or drawing them, we really, physical, physical education class, sometimes that's the only activity some children are getting in the entire day. So it's really an incredible class and it's great to see them learn different things in it. Um, it's really very exciting, the PD develop, the PD program here, professional development is, is, is kind of the standard to be set. It's really incredible and seeing all of the teachers get to work at all these different venues and, and actives. And, um, it's been very special and on Friday, there's a professional development here in our own, uh, teacher from Bell. Mr. Coach Colesley is going to be leading a, a, um, a professional development for teachers throughout Westchester County. We'll be gathering here on Friday as well for a very special program along with our high school staff and we're really proud of that. So why physical education and athletics? Well, they're just extensions of the classroom. You know, they're just giant classrooms. The gym is the biggest classroom we have and the fields are even larger. And, you know, so that's an extension of the classroom. My first job teaching at a principal's, she says, why are you doing this? I go, because it's fun. You know, it should always be about fun. That's what this whole building should be about, experience and engaging. So it's fun. It's about team building. It's about professional development, but it's, but fitness, competition and tradition. Those are all important things that you learn. Uh, this past year, I'd have to say it was outstanding. We've won numerous section titles, state championships. We still have the spring to go, but more importantly is just the numbers of students engaging and participating. Some are working hard every day because they want to win a championship and some just want to belong to something. They just want to be part of something special. And I think those are really great memories that we'll all be part of. So our department purpose is in line with the school's mission and, uh, it's pursuit of excellence, professional, uh, personal growth, teamwork. And, um, we promote values and we work hard. We want commitment. We want students involved. We want community spirit. We want children to learn to self-advocate. We want to make healthy decisions. And they want them to be responsible as well as the families and the spectators that come to our events. So behind every athletic program is a hidden curriculum. It's really what's really being learned. And, you know, yeah, it's about winning. It's about sacrifice, it's about acceptance. It's also about loss. It's about failure. It's about getting back up and brushing yourself off and getting back in there. And those are really tremendous lessons to learn every day in practice and in games. And that leads to this slide because obviously there's something to kind of keep moving it along. And, you know, I think we have to also be very, um, responsible stewards of the district. And I think what we have is, I'm still trying to learn the budget here and where things are coming from. And we have basically modest increases or two percent and some are a little larger because we need some large pieces of equipment. Um, one of those is AEDs. Um, that's one thing in there. And then the other line is, uh, transportation. We're doing a lot of transporting and busing in the district of taking kids from one building to another building as well as all, you know, fuel costs has gone up and just the price of any type of equipment. The other big line for us is our BOSI's, which is, uh, a lot of it is encumbrances. That a lot of that money will come back and we're going to try and put more things through BOSI's because as we said before, it's aidable. And that's something that's very important. And that kind of sums it all up. That's what we want to see all the time.
Can you just say about the BOSI's because I know that is like a, a bigger increase. So explain why that is like that.
Sure.
What do you have to do for BOSI's?
So, so BOSI's is, they, they have three basic fees broken up. One is the office fee and it's about, for, for a school of our size, it's about twenty three thousand dollars. And that basically pays the people that work through BOSI's and monitor all the games and, and things of that nature. Then there's what's called a base section fee where you pay per, per team. It's about eleven thousand dollars for every team that you have, not eleven thousand per team.
Pay to the set that section.
Section. And then the final largest part of the bill is the officials. And that's about eighty five thousand dollars. And they're in the middle of a contract negotiation and we're in need of officials if everybody wants an application. So that's something though that gets encumbered and comes back to the district. So much in that budget is not necessarily all being spent. Whatever doesn't get spent comes right back to the budget, but it's encumbered at the beginning. The other thing is we run other things through there because it's aidable. Local live comes through there. Huddle comes through there, Dipper, Impact is a concussion training. The sport of wrestling does a weight certification program. Bowling is built through there. Skiing indoor track is about thirty five hundred dollars from there.
What's the percentage or it varies? Like there's a certain percentage we get back because.
Well, it will come back on what's not spent.
Right.
Yeah, we, we get about between fifteen, sixty percent back from BOSI's aid. Um, what Jamie's talking about as well as, um, for, for section one fees and, and the officials, we typically get a bill upfront. Um, and then our actual usage, whatever is not allocated to us, the following year will be reimbursed. So in my revenue projections, you'll see some.
And indoor check for the, the arm raise is a little over a hundred thousand dollars for all the teams. So there's a fee for that that's worked in there. Ice hockey and we've been using some PR work through BOSI's as well.
This is just a naive one on my part, right? Where are the coaches getting their salary from? Like the, their payment? Does that come from somewhere else in the?
It comes from a different salary line.
Okay. Thanks.
In, in the, the director and the, uh, super presentations, Jamie's was the only one that actually shows salary lines. But there's a section within the twenty eight fifty five codes that have the, the coaches' salaries in there.
Anybody else? Thank you, Jamie. And that is the end of the budget presentations for the evening. Uh, I would encourage the community, if they have any questions, um, they could participate in our budget form with the PTA or they can contact Andrew Lennon and I and we'll be happy to answer, um, any of the questions since there's not a Q and A tonight on the, on the budget presentations. So thank you and I'd like to thank my colleagues for preparing, uh, for this evening.
So thank you very much. We want to thank them. It's always very detailed. It's always informative and, um, it's always very understandable in, in the way that you presented to us. So thank you so much. Um, okay, that moves us on to committee reports. Um, does anyone have anything to offer? I know we had a communications meeting that was canceled because of the snow, so that will be bumped to next week. Um, but what else has happened that anyone can report on? Hi. Did the wellness committee?
We did.
Okay.
Uh, that was Monday, so before the snow started. And, uh, Andrew, you should fill in where I leave stuff out. But I think where we, uh, what we're proceeding with the food tasting stuff that traditionally has fallen within this committee, uh, students have been enjoying some roasted cauliflower, as I understand it, uh, around the district.
It, it was, uh, West Orchard and I saw our kindergarteners actually go back. Well, some didn't, but some went back four times.
Okay.
And, okay.
We like that.
That's good. That's good. Um, so there's more, there's still a few more opportunities, uh, to go home, I think, uh, on the calendar. But then the other thing we've been doing is focusing on some recommendations around mental wellness. And so Andrew's got, uh, at least one option that will get floated into the policy committee that Hillary and I will take a look at and talk with the staff about once that's ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, the traditional wellness policy covers nutritional education, physical, um, education and then food services. Um, and then non-related food services food. And, um, the committee's been talking a lot about mental wellness. And we know that, um, you know, it's required as part of our, uh, K three twelve health curriculum is a mental wellness education. And so we're working on to bring to the policy committee a draft that would include, uh, mental health and mental wellness within the wellness policy.
Great. Okay. Terrific. Anybody else? All right. And that brings us to our public commentary, which will be in a different location now. Um, welcome, public comments. Try and move that to the middle. Thank you so much. We'll send Josh or. Um, and, um, we ask that everyone limit their comments to three minutes. Um, board members can be contacted, uh, after this meeting by phone, email. Um, once the public comment period has been completed, we may or may not have a discussion based on items presented. And, um, if anyone wishes to step up and make a comment, we'd welcome you to do that this time. Okay.
Right. First time to talk here.
Okay. Oh, and say your name, just so.
Yeah, my name's Jean. Yeah, my family moved in Chappaqua twenty with law playing in two thousand and fifteen because the wonderful school reputation. And I want to thank everybody here to keep the impersonal during pandemic. My kids are in middle school now and we took advantage of the wonderful PTA after school enrichment program. Make his try morning announcement, journal club, debate, math camp, everything you name it. And they were having fun and they quickly identified what they're good at, what they wanted to do, what they don't want to do, what they want to come back next year. Very happy for the decision of the board to move algebra as well as living environment to eighth grade. So they have the opportunity to investigate what they want to do for high school. Now, I got to know the science Olympia last year when my daughter enrolled as a six grader. With a wonderful program, it's like a sport team with six fifteen kids compete in twenty three events. Including study, study, study sessions like meteorology, I've never heard about it. To building venue, build a bridge, hold fifteen pound or with lighter bridge it can build. And you have combined program that you design experiment and put in action. So it's wonderful people keys to learn, which are not really traditionally taught in the school science program or class. We have forty seven students enrolled this year. We have forty seven students enrolled this year in seventh graders. I think it's probably the biggest club in the after school program. We have great support from the teachers and the parents. There are answers asked, one volunteer, there are every single invite. Be invitationals and originals. And I was very, very disappointed. To see how little our school actually investigate our academic achievement in the students. For example, talking about sports, they have public transportation. We ask one time in a year, public transportation to take our kids to the original. Which in the scars down, got denied last year. Forty seven kids in my school district going to scars down. We were turned down yet for public transportation. Okay, it's once a year. I can't understand what is the financial difficulty for schools support such an event? And there's a lot of students show their interest to participate. Now, I'm happy to see the iPad, the new technology getting involved. We need teachers. Parents are coaching. I'm coaching. I'm not expert, but bottomy. The other coaches knew nothing about meteorology. Would the law to have the schools invested more on the teachers that they can coach us? Now, talk about school bus and talk about the other things. The other school in the area have incorporated science Olympia into their curriculum and they have paid coaches and teachers to help the student. If they have interest, they foster those students to study more so they can prepare for the high school science projects. Now, the purpose of our education here is to help our students to to explore their interests. But in the end, is to maximize every single student's potentials. Yes.
Yeah, we can. We can vote to give you an extra minute. Okay, so we're we're allowed to do that. Can we have a motion to give? Next one. Okay, one more minute to finish.
Yeah, I wouldn't wouldn't last long. That's that's I'm very happy for the movement of the board and the school. I'm very happy about that. It's not enough. We need to do more. It's time. Chaplain's great school district. We cannot left our kids crippled because we're lacking of a basic education and science and steps. In the future, pandemic approved, where I'll be moving this new century is science. So I really hope the board and school can pay more attention in school support and enrollment of the teachers to join this after school damage program. To make this our school even better than right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, so I just wanted to come up here today to.
Can you give us your names?
Oh, uh, I'm Sean Q. I'm a current student at the school. Yep. Uh, so I just wanted to come up here today to offer my perspective on this as a student. On the uh world language, specifically uh Chinese. So uh I'm very happy to see that you guys are trying to take steps to add AP Chinese into the high school curriculum. Uh, but I think we should do more and start thinking of ways we can integrate Chinese into the middle schools. Because there is no option to select Chinese as a world language when students are required to take oral language in the middle school. Uh. I've talked to all like a lot of my students, not. A lot of my peers and friends who will take Chinese currently this year. And uh they all agree that uh they started earlier and they would have a much better time continuing to learn this language. As uh Chinese is it's a pretty complex and sophisticated language and uh. Me myself and all of my friends think that it should be started at the same time as the other world languages. Uh, also, by doing this, I think we can show more support for AAPI. And uh, yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Um, do we have anyone else that would like to come up and make a comment?
Hi, I'm Dana Gorill. I'm the parent of three children at West Orchard. I'm here because as we enter into budget season, I think it's incumbent on the administration and the Board of Ed to keep class size in mind. I was invited to a group of about fifty parents, all of whom are extremely concerned about the current class sizes in our district. Particularly as it relates to elementary school. I think that as you're looking at where you're adding funds, that it should be the highest priority to add classroom teachers. I worry that the slide from last week that showed the projections for next year. Admittedly, I am not an expert and I'll attend one of those sessions. I don't I don't know that it's realistic. Although again, I'm not saying it's wrong, but I believe it assumes no new students. And I can say that. In my daughter's kindergarten in West Orchard, we've had two new students since the beginning of the year. There were two more and another after February break. So there's twenty two kids in kindergarten. There's twenty five and twenty six in third and fourth grade. And while that might be acceptable under the union contractor, however that's determined. That doesn't mean it's right for our district. It doesn't mean it's best and it's not what we should strive for. So I think that also one other point I wanted to make before I run out of time is that right now. We have a lot of economic uncertainty, right? Especially after last weekend. We know that we're in a time of unprecedented inflation. So my concern is that we have certain costs that are fixed. Like pensions, I'm sure healthcare is probably increasing, I would imagine. So we know that whatever happens with our resources. If the economy is not doing well and that decreases, we still have those expenses. So I'm hoping that that is somehow being factored into things. But before we are adding. I do think it's imperative that we are focusing on things like class size because a lot of parents are very concerned. Um, as an aside, and I realize this is an addition, but I think it's one that I support. My kids were learning Mandarin in elementary school when we moved here from out of state. So I agree that that would be something that would be amazing to have. I know that language in elementary is a part of a strategic plan. And I really think that needs to happen. There's a lot of research and data that shows that language at a young age is really good for brain development, in particular Mandarin. Um, and so I just encourage the board to look at that as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'm Larry Liu, a resident of City Eight, New York, Chappaqua, New York. Uh, first of all, uh, I'm grateful for the school board and the school administration for the attention paid to the AP Chinese class. So it's making progress. Thank you so much. Okay, so uh then uh I would touch upon some difficult issues. If I'm not able to complete, I will send the school board and the school administration an email. Uh, the first one, uh, those are concerns. It's not necessarily something wrong the school has done is that uh we receive communication from the school regarding. Uh, uh, the diversity efforts that in uh the one of the efforts include. It appears to suggest that we are aggregating uh performance uh data based on race. Um, I personally I do not have problem with stats, but uh but from the perspective about Asian families, for some area around country. Uh, um, uh, that people use those stats to remove education opportunities. Uh, educational resources from Asian families. So I just wonder if the school could articulate the safeguards. And and provide explanation to the families how those stats would be used. So that to to ensure uh uh those families, uh their uh their kids learning opportunities uh will be will not be removed. Uh, learning resources will not be taken away from them. Uh, that's the first question. Uh, the first comment, the first concern. And the second concern, I'm really impressed. Uh, by the school's efforts regarding the diversity and which include uh diversity hiring. And then I still remember George Chan was here, talk about uh uh the 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 staff, the administration should uh reflect the community. Um, I I guess that's one of the reasons um for the diversity hiring. And I hope that the Asian uh teachers uh. Uh, Asian teachers, Asian staff would not be excluded from the process. That would be ironic. So uh I I then I think of the supporting staff. It uh is to include those people who are familiar, who are able to talk to the local bike by by park community as well. Now, that's the second comment. And the third, fourth comment is that I think I sense there's concern within uh the within the community. About some of the diversity efforts is that uh I think that uh while we are promoting diversity efforts, it's important. Uh, for the school district to make um. Uh, make clear its critical commitment to excellence and diversity. Uh, and also commitment to diversity, um intellectual diversity and ideological diversity, uh which are very important uh as well. Uh, so when we have a really good teacher, uh uh good with the kids. Uh, the kids love the teacher, that person's race, gender, sexual orientation. Okay, so I will.
We can give you another minute to finish up. Um, I'm going to give them another minute, second. Okay, yes, you can have another minute.
So although this character doesn't matter, uh, it is uh uh uh. Um, the the qualification, the the ability to work with the students are the primary concern. Of course, the others are important concerns as well. And that's the second comment. And third, uh, and the last comment regarding intellectual and ideological diversity is that. When uh one of the strong arguments for uh for uh the race uh the racing uh diversity is that. Uh, as kids graduate from the school district, uh have to work with different people. But that's the same for ideological differences as well. They will have to work people from working background, a different. Uh, so so it is important uh as well. So I I think that's important to uh make clear those two commitments along with the diversity efforts that will make the programs grow. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Kathleen Derazans. Um, I'm the mother of a third grader at West Orchard. I also have a three year old who was one of the ninety CPSE uh children and we're very grateful. Uh, for all the services that she's received so far. Um, I'm here tonight similar to Dana. Um. My son uh class at West Orchard has twenty six kids, um which I did not really. Perceive as a problem before, uh but I feel like um his teacher said he benefits from. Small group instruction. It's difficult to do that with that many children. Um, so as you are going through this budget process, I'm hoping I feel like that that was a miss. Uh, you know, before. I with COVID, we've kind of been doing a science experiment on our kids. We don't know what the impacts are still. I mean, I definitely see it with my little one who was born. Three months before lockdown, like and and my son, you know, all of these kids were um in kindergarten. When uh the shutdown occurred and we were very pleased with how everything went. Uh, you know, that they were in person so much like. I I can't over emphasize how good that was, but I feel like. You know, there's a lag now that we are still compensating for. And so. Um, as you are, you know, really making these important decisions that you are thinking about, you know, how we can best. Get all of our kids up to that level that we want and uh give them what they need. And like the bare minimum thing in my mind. Is that they have small classes. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Mike DeBellas. I live in Chappaqua. And I just wanted to say how grateful I am for the great teachers that we have in this district and thank the Board of Ed for all they do for us. And the Board of Education and the admin. Uh, the teachers work hard. I have three kids in this district and they're having a great time and I really appreciate that. Uh, and I just want to acknowledge the fact that there was a lot of teachers took their time to be here to listen to the Board of Education. Tonight, and I'm very grateful for all of our teachers and staff at all the schools. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mike.
Uh, my name's Ying Cheng Chu and I'm moving from Massachusetts to New York State in twenty seventeen. I have two kids in uh seventh grade. Um, I I want to talk about something rather as a sharing experience. In context related to science Olympics. Uh, my son attended the mass camps in the past couple of weeks ago. And I'm surprised um and the team was qualified as a second place. From the West Coast County competition, but by the time we go to the state competition, we only have two kids remaining in that team. So they were disqualified because they lose half of the team member. And then I learned from the math teacher, actually the science Olympic for the county level. And the state level mass counts scheduled on the same day. So the teacher was trying really hard to recruit more students, join the team in order to maintain the qualification. But I think by all means and a lot of kids signed some other things. They have to go to science Olympic and so on eventually. So my kids go uh went to the event with another kids. They participated in team competition, but by through the math teacher actually borrowed two students from Adly's Lee, Adly's Lee, I think. School. So it's kind of sad for me to see that even happen because it's an honor for the school to be able to qualify for state competition. So I I want to share my experience. Just want to see whether the, you know, school or the school district can do something. Coordinating all these different activities. So don't let the conflicts happen again. And also help the teacher somewhat to prevent this kind of things happen. Eventually, I think Ashley qualified for the state competition at a third place to the West County, but they win the champion. But Chappco School District basically lost competition, just participate as individual member. The temporary formed the team did well with the score, but their score is not qualified to, you know. To the competition. So it's kind of sad story. Um, I hope in the future this can be prevented and we can get more resource. And by the way, for the state competition, we drive five hours, go over to the place for the competition because that night was heavy snow. Uh, literally tripled my time to drive over. We did not expect the bus service or whatever, but I think the. The the effort we put in, it just returned some of disappointment. I can see in the two kids. When you see Ali's school has like eight, ten kids stay there and Chappo's district only have two, they feel a little bit disappointed as well. So that's my experience.
Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Jen McNamara. I'm a Greeley alum. I have three children, the first of whom will be entering kindergarten next fall. This fall, uh spoken certainly at length with Andrew, you know, communicated with the board. Just wanted to. Add a couple of comments regarding class size concerns. Um. Dana and I'm sorry, I missed your name. You know, their children are in elementary school now experiencing. The impact when their students, their children, their students are in a class that is right about the. The threshold size that the district has said is the max or the threshold we should have in each section. And so it seems like a lot of the kin, the elementary classes are operating between ninety five and a hundred and five percent of. These district stated class size threshold, whereas looking at the budget um overviews. From the last decade, middle school and high school is usually operating at about fifty eight to sixty five percent of the district's stated. Section threshold sizes. So a question is, you know, are those threshold sizes? Should they be reevaluated? Maybe are the. Are the high school thresholds, published threshold sizes are higher than they should be and maybe they should be reduced? Or are we looking at a resource allocation? Is it? Fair to be allocating, you know, so many teacher resources to middle, high school level? Where we have classes that are at sixty percent of what their size should be, whereas we have currently have kindergarten classes that are a hundred and ten percent of their threshold. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. I'm Erin Ferguson. I'm also a parent of two children in West Orchard Elementary, one in first. One in fourth grade. They tried the cauliflower today. They both said it was good. So great job. And I want to thank you all for all of the really informative presentations tonight. It's really wonderful to see all the work that you're doing. Um, I'm also going to echo the concerns of some of my fellow parents around class size. There's research to show that decreases in class size improve the performance of students. And that's all students. So whether it's a student who's struggling or a student who's maybe. Needs to be challenged, smaller class size is going to benefit the entire community. or a student who's maybe needs to be challenged, smaller class size is going to benefit the entire community. And it's wonderful to see all the work that we're doing to provide educational opportunities in middle and high school, AP courses, extracurriculars, really exciting electives. But the foundations for that learning starts in elementary school. And as part of both the strategic planning and the budget, I think it's important that we assess the class size in those elementary schools so we can make sure we're building the foundations in those kids that they're going to need in order to succeed as we challenge them with algebra and living environment. And, you know, hopefully Chinese in middle school. And I thank you all for your time and for your consideration, and I hope it's something that we can continue to discuss.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Okay, that concludes public comment. Did, does anyone want to speak about anything or any issues that were raised or discuss them at all?
I guess I would, I would just share for our families that weren't at the last presentation, our K six class sizes are driving the entire budget this year. And so I would encourage families to go online to our budget section of our homepage to look at that presentation to see the proposed sizes. We did make some adjustments based on what we learned from this year and base some feedback we received from our parents. I, and on a different, in a different area, but connected to the budget. I heard concerns today about supporting different middle school clubs and activities and equity around that support. And so I'm going to take that feedback back to the high, the middle school principals. They have a budget where they have discretionary funds to support clubs and to support transportation. So I'll bring that feedback forward to both Joe Maza and Jeff Curtis to share with them some of the thoughts that were raised and concerns tonight at, at the meeting. And then the last thing I would, I would say is that foreign language is a very serious consideration right now of the strategic plan, but not just Mandarin. How we're supporting students in Spanish and in French and in Latin, and then how, what we aren't doing in, in elementary school and what we could potentially do and what that would mean for fifth through twelfth grade programs. So we're flushing that out. And I do anticipate, even though I don't make those decisions myself, that that probably will be a target area for us, but that's a significant, in some ways, significant budget increase, which is why it would have to be a part of that plan in order for us to move forward because we'd have to reconstruct our finances in, in a, in a, in a way to support foreign language if we were to expand it, which I think is, we're, the direction that we're, we're probably headed in. So it's fun to share that feedback based on what we heard today. And thank you everyone for speaking this evening.
And comments are very much appreciated. So thank you so much. Okay, we will move on to item three, which is approvals and ratifications. Item three point one, be resolved that the Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the March eighth, two thousand twenty-three Board of Education meeting. Can I have a motion to approve item three point one? You'll move second. Any questions, comments, all in favor? Item three point two, this is the third reading, which was mentioned earlier, reading and adoption of our graduation new policy, policy forty-seven seventy. Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby adopts policy forty-seven seventy regarding graduation. Can I have, I'll move item three point two. Can I have a second? Any more questions, comments on this? All in favor?
Okay, so with this policy, I'm going to work with Dr. Seppi. We have to send something out to junior parents and students just so they understand this shift. There might be students who may want to run for offices based on this new information. And so by the end of this month, we'll, we'll have something prepared that, that will go out to the students that this will affect, particularly in our upcoming elections.
Okay.
I recommend four point one instructional as presented. I'll move item four point one. Any questions, comments, all in favor? Congratulations to Jennifer, and we will celebrate her with the rest of our retirees in June. And there's nothing for non-instructional.
Okay, I, that moves us to our consent agenda. We use the consent agenda to make more efficient use of our time by passing in a single motion a bunch of routine items. Tonight's consent agenda is item, well, we go through items five point one through five point nine. This includes our CSE summaries, some agreements for student services, acceptance of an eight thousand dollar gift, which is in honor of our Regeneron scholars. So yay to them and yay on the money grant. Well, take it both. Both things are great. And then some bid awards for graduation tent, Rupert West Orchard, et cetera. So does anyone want to pull anything out of the consent agenda this evening? All right, so can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items five point one through five point nine? Have a second? Any questions, comments, all in favor? That moves us to item six, which is an acknowledgement of the contract already approved by the superintendent for board policy sixty-eighty-five. And this is item six point one. This is an agreement for a speaker for our superintendent conference day this week. Correct. So can I have a motion to acknowledge item six point one? Have a second? All in favor? Nothing on facilities, financials. That brings us to notice of future meetings. Our next meeting, again, round three, budget proposals, next Wednesday, the twenty-second. We'll be back here to give the musical, the auditorium. That next, next week, we'll be discussing the budgets for operations and maintenance, non-instructional revenue, tax rates, and contingency budget presentations. And then our following, we will have another meeting the week after that on the twenty-ninth, which is our budget adoption, and then we will be back in the Harsh Greeley Gym at that time. So can I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting at nine fifty? Have a second? All in favor? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you everyone for coming this evening.